Long story short.
That's my life right now. How's Andy just writing out something?
I'd like to call to order the Spona Planning Commission for October 2019. At this time, we'd ask everyone to stand for a prayer and pledge.
Right. Father, we thank you for another day here in our town. Lord, we ask you to continue to watch over the people that protect it, that serve it, that take care of it. Lord, we also ask that you continue to watch over those that are fighting fires with drought conditions and things of that nature, Father, that are just... We need rain, we pray for rain. Father, we say a special prayer for one of our firemen, Shane Patterson, as he deals with some health issues. We understand he's probably on the road to recovery, but we lift him up tonight. Lord, go with us now as we deliberate the business of the town. Give us wisdom and let us do the things that make us proud. We appreciate it in all we do, and we ask for your blessing. Amen.
If you would, please face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Moving on, item number three, citizens' comments, none at this time.
Correct.
Item number four, approval of the minutes. Do we have any corrections or additions to the minutes as they were handed out? If not, may I have a motion to approve?
I move we approve the minutes.
Second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on, item number five, new business annexation. Number one is Rocky Ford Cammival Road. Staff comments?
Yes, this first request tonight is a request for annexation, and it's for portions of two parcels of land. One is about forty-six hundredths of an acre, and one is literally just about one hundredth of an acre. This is at the intersection of Rocky Ford Cammival Road and Morton Lane. The surrounding zoning is a mix of the PRD, which is Blakeney and Cedar Hills, and R3 in town, and then RM in Rutherford County. Land use plan would support a medium-density, single-family residential development here. This area would be served by consolidated for water. And this annexation request is really to allow for the reconstruction of the Morton Lane, Rocky Ford Cammival Road intersection. This is something that was discussed as a part of the Blakeney development, and they were required to make this happen as a part of the development. This would align with a future road in that development, new road would align there. And so this is essentially just would allow for the annexation of the property where that reconstruction would take place. And so we do need documentation from the two, those two property owners. We have received it on one. The other one is, has not been received by us yet, but it is being worked on by the developer, and he has assured me we should have any issue getting that. It's just get, get that signature. So we would, we could, you all could recommend this to plan it, to council rather, but we would need to have that before council can take action, because we do need to get that consent per the state law now, so.
All right. We have somebody just doing exactly what we asked them to do, to correct what we feel like would be a dangerous situation. We appreciate their cooperation. Do I have a motion?
I move we approve the staff comments.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Do we have a motion and a second to recommend the annexation and zoning to council? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And I assume this is part of the same. Item number two is adjacent to this?
It's actually not adjacent to it. It is in a very close vicinity, but it's actually on the other side of the Morton Lane. This is a separate tract of land. It has been requested by Mr. Sean Collins to be annexed and zoned R3 as well. It's about 9.26 acres. It's addressed at 8162 Rocky Ford Cammival Road. Again, the surrounding zoning is the Cedar Hills PRD and R3 in town and RM in Rutherford County. Again, the landage plan would support medium-density, single-family here. And again, water would be provided by CUD. All of the services would be provided by the town. This is kind of the last tract in this area on this side of Rocky Ford Cammival Road that's not in the city. So that's all that I got.
Y'all have questions?
Not voting or participating.
We're down to four. We have a motion.
I move we approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Four with one extension, not participating. All right, under new business, a rezoning request. Item number one, Thankside Drive. Staff comments?
This is a request from Jerry Butler, and it's to rezone several tracts of land that all total about 89.2 acres from R3 to PRD. This is one that you all looked at last month. It has been amended some as to what was recommended last month, because it was turned down by the council, but they have resubmitted a revised plan. So in surrounding zoning is R3 in town and RM in Rutherford County. Landage plan would support a medium-density, single-family residential development here. This proposed PRD is for 249 single-family lots. We had several comments. Many of them have been addressed. I'll kind of go through those. Number four, staff does recommend the town consider annexation of the existing right-of-way of Kedron Church Road if we do recommend this. This would allow for the town to control any needed improvements, including possibly closing the road where the creek currently crosses the road, which is still a comment that we would keep. Number five is really kind of informational comment regarding the sewer trunk. Have to continue to flow with the creek to the property line. Number six, we'd ask them to submit a traffic study. We did receive that today, so we have received it. We have not had time since we did discuss it today. We haven't had time to really review it and evaluate it yet, but we do have received that. And then they are recommending internal aid improvements at Kedron Church and Rocky Ford Cammival intersection. Number seven, regarding a floodplain boundary shown, they have added that. Number eight, this has to do with the parking. Last month, they had shown three spaces on each lot in the driveway. And what they have done, based on the discussion at the council planning commission work session we had on the 23rd of September, they are, have, basically have, in lieu of any additional parking or behind the house or anything like that, they are setting the houses back 35 feet from the road. They still would have a front entry garage, but they did set the house back, which was one of the alternatives that we had recommended, had discussed that night as a way to address that issue. So then number nine, they have also amended their plan with regards to, while we discussed about open space, and that is on your agenda later tonight, President Amendment to the zoning ordinance. And then what they have proposed is in compliance with that proposed zoning ordinance amendment, which is that have to have at least 15% of the property dedicated as open space. They actually have about 27%. And then at least 30% of the required open space has to be set aside as usual space, which is, for them, is a little over four acres, and they have playgrounds, pavilions, dog park areas set aside, as well as some sitting areas that haven't set aside that are as usual space in addition to the other that's just going to be unimproved space.
Are those spaces still defined as playgrounds and...?
Yeah, we have a children's, and it kind of, and this is, what you have in front of you in paper form is the most recent submittal. What we had in the, on your iPad has been revised based on that meeting last week. So the hard copy in front of you is the most recent submittal.
Same number of lots?
Same number of lots, yes.
Did the lots configuration change, or just the setbacks?
The configuration really didn't change. The setbacks have changed, and with the road layout, the number of lots is really very similar to what you looked at last month.
Okay.
We, comment number 10, we ask them to show details on the proposed realignment. That is part of what they're talking about, is widening of Kedron Church Road, as well as realigning the intersection of Kedron Church and Rocky Ford Cammival Road. They have indicated they would provide those as part of the plan and construction plans. So that would need to be, still be a comment. 11 and 12 are all basically from CUD with regards to what they have asked for, that they'll need to, and they have requested the will serve letter and all that kind of stuff. Couple of things, just I think that they have, in the revisions, a couple of things they missed, I think. The typical lot shows the 20-foot rear setback, but the typical building setback and easement detail directly next to it, so it shows a 15-foot rear setback. So they do need to make that change to make those consistent. And then in the development, on the book, on page, it's like the third or fourth page, under development standards, they still show the three spaces on site for parking, and so that does need to be corrected as well. That was, again, kind of holdover from last month. They are still showing a little bit of parking in a couple of locations, kind of in, around the mail kiosk and bus stop and things like that, that are all kind of off-site from the, as well as some parking around the amenity areas and that sort of thing as well. It would be off individual lots, but they have taken away some, several of the, they had several parking pods kind of around, they did eliminate, so. I think that's all that I've got.
So the way it's presented with your comments, then specifically, does that include the Kedron Road?
We are recommending it, and I think if you all do recommend this, I do think we probably should go forward with annexation of that right-of-way.
At this point in time, or...?
Yeah, I think it does not, would not require the annexation of any other properties or anything. We're not surrounding anybody or anything like that. I think if that allows for us to control it with regards to the forward and closing that, it also would allow for us to, obviously, when the plats come in and all those construction plans and all that, it would be us reviewing them and not the county road board, county engineering department. That would be our recommendation. I think that's ultimately the, where we, if we go forward with this development, I think we need to have control of that. One other thing I think I do want to point out is, as part of that, Kedron Church kind of becomes another entrance into the development, and as part of that, they are reworking the access point to the church itself, and they've kind of shown that on the plans as well. And literally had met with the church last night and kind of worked that out, but they are here. If you have any questions with them, file that.
And as far as fire hydrant location and things like that, or sewer availability, if, would that be available to the church, or would that be something we would look at with the flats?
Probably, I mean, that's something that they may have worked out between them. I think that's something that we would really look at specifically when we get to the flats for that.
Well, we would normally require water service and sewer service to go to the joint property.
And that was one of our comments, number, number five, regarding extending it, we'll have to, we'll have to continue to the creek along the creek to the property line. So that is certainly something that, yeah, we would require it anyway. But typically, we would look at it more specifically when the plat comes in.
Other questions y'all might have?
How are we addressing the situation with the creek and roadway?
Well, I think we, I think annexing it gives us the ability to address it how we want to. I think what we're, our feeling is, is it would just basically be closed on the one side, so you would, you could still use the road from Rocky Ford Cammival down to the church and all, and anyone who has houses that are on there and all that could still use it, but you would close it at the fore.
With what we're doing here, are we making that decision or not?
We're really not making that decision here. We're really making the decision whether or not to annex it.
All we're deciding is to, the recommendation is to annex.
Give us the ability to.
We're not saying, we're not defining what we do right now.
Right.
Because I would really like to have the church be part of that discussion.
Right.
So that would be handled at site, then, is what you're saying?
Well, the plat, right.
Yeah.
Yeah. At this time, we're really just looking at annexing it right-of-way, which gives us the ability to make that decision.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Kevin, I heard you say that, and I see it in the development standards, there is a 20-foot rear setback on it.
Yeah, but on, it's just on one of those are drawings, on one of some of the details. It's kind of a holdover from what they had before that they just missed when they made the changes.
Just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
Essentially, this would meet what we're looking at as far as some of our changes that we probably have later on in the agenda. Is that correct?
Right. As far as the open space, specifically the open space is on your agenda.
Specifically, open space is also specifically setbacks?
Well, the setbacks are kind of, each part kind of has to stand on its own with that, and I think that was really what we have said, that the setbacks, the parking, all that is going to be something that each development kind of presents to us how they want to do it. The seven and a half foot side setbacks is not something we said, but as far as the front setbacks, do they want to have rear entry garages, front entry garages, all those kind of things? That's going to be looked at individual, each individual development.
But it fits with...
It fits with what we talked about, yes.
That was the question.
Right, I'm sorry.
Okay. Anything else? Do I have a motion?
Just right before you make the motion, I just want to make sure, a plan of services for an annexation of Kedron Church Road is not in your packet. It would be very standard and boilerplate, I would, so we would, we'll make sure we're okay. We can, we have one for Sean Collins, and we have one for the other two that are, that we don't have specifically in there, in there. But all I would say exactly the same thing is what all those say, except we would say that right-of-way at Kedron Church Road has to be getting instead of those parcel numbers. So I just want to make sure.
If I have any issues with that, no, we'll go ahead and do it, because that's a pretty standard type document.
Right.
All right, I have a motion.
I move to approve with all staff comments.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, filed, see you. Wasn't ignoring you, Enix, this looked like it was going all right. Under item B, rezoning request, number two, 205 Monroe Street. Staff comments?
This is a request to rezone a parcel of land on Monroe Street. It's about sixty-eight hundredths of an acre. The request is rezoning from C2 to C5. It's in the, is in the lower street overlay as well with either zone. Landage plan would support downtown development here. This lot doesn't meet the minimum lot size of C5 of one acre, and also, in staff's opinion, would not be consistent with the vision we had in our downtown master plan as well. So that's all that I have. There is, are two existing buildings there. One of them does have a legally grandfathered, non-conforming automobile repair use. Then in the other building, one has moved in without a business license or anything, and they came to get a license. We told them no, because it couldn't, didn't meet the requirements, so.
That was in the second building, I'm sorry.
It was a, it was a different, it was an automobile, it was a different business, but another automobile repair, yeah. So this was an attempt to try and be able to keep this tenant, I think, so. But it's not really consistent, but the downtown plan is really, is also not, doesn't meet the minimum lot size requirement of that zone.
What is that lot size, do we know?
An acre, and this one's about sixty-eight hundredths of an acre.
So it would fit a C2 zone as well?
It is, which it is, it's currently C2, but the use is not...
So they're looking at for the usage of...
The automobile repair.
Continuance of auto repair.
And going into a different address, different building.
C5 also allows auto sales, doesn't it?
Yes.
Would they be able to do that there with the C5 zone?
If that is a C5 zone, they could, yes.
Staff have a recommendation? I didn't see one here.
Well, I mean, we, like I said, it doesn't meet the minimum lot size of C5 as well, and it's not consistent with our downtown plan, so we would have a negative recommendation.
All right, any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we did not, we deny, as it's not consistent with the surrounding zoning, it doesn't support the minimum lot size, it's not consistent with the downtown master plan.
The motion is to not recommend the zoning change. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor of not recommending this zoning change, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, five minutes. Rezoning request, Grand Steph on 400 Hazelwood Drive. Staff comments?
This is a rezoning request at 400 Hazelwood Drive, to request rezoning from C4 to a PUD. This is one that you all looked at a couple months ago, I think, for an R2, I believe, to PUD request. I'm sorry, R2 to C4, rather. The surrounding zoning is a mix of R1, R2, C2, and C3, and the landage plan would support downtown development here, and their fire flow is a little bit greater than 1,300 gallons per minute. This proposed PUD is, there's an existing house on the property. They want to use that as a commercial building on the bottom floor and basically convert the top floor as, into a residence upstairs. So they did have a site plan, which, we didn't have any paper copies, so that's not in front of you, it was on your iPad. They are with their, had their layout, their parking layout and all that. It is meeting our requirements for parking and, as well as for the commercial use and the residence as well, so. I think that's all that I got.
Do you have any issues with this?
No.
Have a motion?
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Do we see that area changing with the zoning that's residential around it, R1 and so forth?
I think it is, especially along Hazelwood Drive. We've got that already kind of happening on the east side of Hazelwood. This is the only tract on the west side, but on the east side of Hazelwood, you've got the commercial buildings and commercial use is already there. So I can see Hazelwood certainly changing into some more of what this would be, or C4-type uses certainly.
The C4 zone has already been approved, is that correct?
Correct, yeah. This is just to add, actually going back a little bit to add the residential use back in, just for one residence on the upper floor of the house. So the C4 does not allow residential use at all, so it would, they want to go back to have, allow for that residential use as well as the commercial, so.
Any other discussion or questions?
Kevin, you said that the parking would meet requirements.
Yes.
I know that that added a lot of concrete in there.
Right, yeah. We had a site plan they had submitted when they were, when they had to convert it into the commercial use, and they actually have more than what's, a little bit more, not a lot more, but because of the adding the residential use, that takes care of that though, so.
Other questions? Do I have a motion?
I move to approve, staff comments?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, five minutes. Just for your information, one thing I mentioned to Kevin is for maybe them to, for staff to look to see is this type use we want to make available in all of our C4. It's a neighborhood commercial use. A lot of what we're doing emphasizes mixed-use type uses. I would like for them to at least look at it to see if it's something we maybe want to consider or not. Do y'all have any particular thoughts on that? I can't imagine where we have C4 that I'd have a major issue with this, but I haven't thought all the way through it or looked at the map. But I do know we are encouraging mixed-use development in several areas as far as our plans go.
I don't think it's any problem exploring that idea.
Yeah, we can certainly take a look at that.
And I can see more of that type use in an area like Hazelwood, all up and down the street there, that makes kind of a blended use between commercial, commercial and residential kind of together, and I can see people wanting to live and work in there. We have, we have that already. It's just you have to go through a special process to get...
Right. The only time it's really, it's an option without a rezoning is in the C1, which is the immediate downtown area, some of the multi-story buildings downtown. There is a BZA process where you can go to BZA to have an upper story residential.
That is the first place we ever allowed.
Right. We've had a few go through the process. I don't know if any of them have ever actually moved in, no. We've had two or three that have gone through the process and been approved.
And we have some places where, like barber shops or beauty salons that are, where a portion of the home is being used for that. And so anyway, y'all have a chance, take a look at that.
Okay.
Just report back to us. All right, moving on, rezoning requests. Item number four, Wade Harried Drive. Staff comments?
This is a tract of land on Wade Harried. It's been addressed at 500 Wade Harried. It's currently, is a vacant tract. It's about 12 acres of property. Currently zoned I3. It's been requested to be rezoned to I1. I think this next. It's kind of an odd, kind of a shape of property. It kind of surrounds four other tracts, one of which you all looked at last month or so, requested to be rezoned residential. Surrounding zoning is all I3, other than, I guess we do have the planned industrial development that's across the street there, but everything else is, is basically heavy industrial. Everything else is, is basically heavy industrial zoning, and that's why our land use plan would support. The proposed user here is a, is kind of a light industrial user, which is allowed in the I3. It's not a use issue. But the I3 zone has the most restrictive setbacks that we have in town, a hundred feet front, fifty feet on the side and rear. And so they have asked for this lighter industrial zone to allow for a little more flexibility in siding their building on the property, because again, they, it's, they're kind of surrounding some other properties and have two road frontages and that sort of thing. They could, with an I1 zoning, they could have lesser setbacks, especially those front setbacks.
What is the difference?
As I said, it's a hundred, fifty, and fifty for I3, and I1 is thirty, twenty, and twenty-five, I believe. Let me make sure.
But the only place it would affect would be, well, the only frontage on this lot is on Wade Harret.
They have frontage on Sam Griffin as well.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So there's two fronts there, and then it is thirty feet front, twenty on the side, and twenty-five on the rear.
Do they have to declare a front, a rear?
Really what you would look at, you would have two fronts with Wade Harret and Sam Griffin, and we would have to, we would have to declare. My understanding is, which is why they have an address to Wade Harret, is they're planning to front Wade Harret. So the back, next to Nissan, would be the rear, and then you would have a side on the side property that also above Nissan. And then you're around, you would have this setback, probably would be a side setback around the other, those four tracks there that are in the middle as well. So.
From an I3 to an I1, it's almost a down.
It's a down zoning as far as use, sir.
It's more restrictive than the I3.
Right.
Uses, correct?
Yes.
So it's predominantly just for setback purposes?
It's mainly for setback purposes, is why they requested it, yeah. Because the use is going to be the same either way.
Have you heard of anybody in the homes?
No.
Is there, is that a current structure on the back corner of that property behind the homes?
I don't think there's any structures on the property that's been requested. Those, four of those, or I'm sorry, three of the four lots are, do have homes on them.
I know that one was last month, was the empty lot.
Was the empty one, yes. There is one that's empty, and that's the one that was requested last month.
Are there any road development plans for either Sam Griffin or Wade Harret that those setbacks would conflict with?
There's really not. I mean, we will have to look at their plan. It may, Wade Harret is not, I don't know how, if it's, how wide it is, and we may have to look at that, if they really do a large scale industrial user using Wade Harret, we may have to look at a little bit of improvements on Wade Harret. Sam Griffin has already been widened and improved, especially at the intersection with Lowry Street, when the large building that's in the PID zone there was built a few years ago. So it's actually, it's actually in pretty good shape.
If we felt like we needed more road right of way, we would address that at site plan?
Yes.
And require that to be part of our, they would have to dedicate that at the time when we do a site plan. Is that correct?
Typically, that's what we do, yes, sir.
So right now, the only traffic going in and out of Wade Harret is residential people for those homes?
You do have some, then you have some on the south side, I think, and Milton's Electric has that power substation there, there's not a lot of traffic. And then you do have.
Is that accessed off of Wade Harret?
It is. And then you have the trucking company that's accessed somewhat off Wade Harret as well. It's at the corner of Wade Harret and Sam Griffin.
But not the fourth.
Back there, it's really primarily just residential, yeah, back there now.
That would have to need to be improved.
Okay, other questions? Have a motion? I move we approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Under new business, item C, sketch plat, Walnutwood subdivision. Staff comments?
This is a sketch plat for a piece of property, the Phoenix, a few months ago, on Rock Springs Road. It's part of parcels, well, a much larger parcel. It's about twenty-four point eight one acres, proposed for thirty-six lots. We had a few comments, several of them are really standard kind of comments, first three especially, and then we do have more than adequate fire flow here, three thousand gallons per minute. But we do have a few other comments, though. Number five, we just could raise a concern, this is a steep piece of property, and we are somewhat concerned with the ability of a fire apparatus here. That's something we're going to, we want to bring out to their attention, it's something we're going to look at, to look at very closely. Number six, we'd ask them to show the location of proposed mail kiosk, any associated parking. They have done that. It's actually on the very end of the second cul-de-sac. They also, the parking they're providing is actually parallel and in the right of way. I think we would prefer, I guess, that it be located a little more centrally located and that the parking would not be in the right of way. So that was, we would kind of amend that comment, ask them to take a look at that, moving that. And then, number seven, we'd ask them to provide a sketch plat for all the property, just so we can look at road connections from a utility standpoint, traffic standpoint, with a traffic study and that sort of thing. We'd ask them to kind of look at that. They've indicated this is all they're looking to develop, and so that they have not provided that to us. But we did request that, so that was comment seven. So the rest of that property, for the most part, is not in the town limits at this time. There is, a portion of it is, because they were looking at developing at one point the southern part of the property and come developing it south to north. At that time, we asked them to, when their next section came in, that they would need to look at another bridge, and so they brought this property in, but now they're saying they're not going to develop the rest of it. So, but anyway, that's what, that was their response to that comment. So I think that's all that I got.
What's the zoning on this property?
R3.
Kevin, on the mail kiosk, aren't they usually in the front? Or is it just set back in the back corner?
Well, it doesn't necessarily have to be in the front, but it is usually a little more centrally located and at the very end of the last cul-de-sac. So they do have detention ponds near the creek there and all, so that's probably why they're trying to avoid that part of it.
Actually, lots of people that, anybody's got mails coming down that, a lot of traffic on that one street, just pick your mail up or check on it every day or every other day.
Right.
Back to the back of that street, so.
I mean, the area at the front is the most logical place, but it's detention pond and flood plain, so that's probably why they tried to avoid that. It might be a possibility near where like Lot Six is or something like that, maybe. If you shift lots a little bit, maybe you can make, have enough room there.
That's steep. Kevin, how far down is this from the Gwynn Farms? I mean, it's not far.
It's not far. In fact, you would.
I guess my question is, where would that road improvement meet up with this property at all?
It really wouldn't, because they're, they're doing the road improvement in front of their property. And you have, they're not getting all the way to the property boundary with this development here. So, so the widening that they're going to be doing really would not extend this far out.
Have you talked to Chief about fire getting in and out of that?
We have. That was, that was the reason for the comment.
Sorry.
Yeah. That was why that comment was made.
Do we have road restrictions or requirements written in as to far, as what degrees of incline or?
We have a maximum slope, yes, sir. And that's, of course, at this point, we don't know exactly what this is designed to be or anything, because they haven't gotten to that point yet.
But when they get to that point, it has to meet what we have in our restrictions.
We have, we have subdivision regulations do have maximum slopes.
Well, I thought it did.
Yeah.
That we would look at specifically.
With the preliminary plan, construction plans, yeah. Actually, mainly, we were primarily, we wanted to make sure they were aware of that.
Putting everybody on notice that this is going to be a consideration, and you're going to have to meet those.
Right.
Minimums or max.
Max, below the minimum, or below the max, yeah.
I was just gonna, and you may know as much about this and the banking industry. I'm thinking that FHA would have some slope guidelines as well for driveways. If I'm not mistaken, it's like fourteen percent is the max. Do you know anything about that?
I do not.
Well, so that could lend up their marketability in there, too, if those driveways are steep or whatever.
And obviously, that could be a concern, too. We've had some, we do have a few locations in town that, I mean, that are built where the fire department can't get up the driveway. I mean, it's so steep, they can't bring equipment up to it and whatever, so.
Some of those in the Highlands, I think, are.
Yeah, and Cedar Forest, the top part of Cedar Forest has some of those situations. I think that was, that we have those situations already. I think that's what Chief Culverston was concerned about, he didn't want to have that happen again, so.
Is this something that we need to look at from a planning perspective then, as far as a rag concerning that?
Well, we have a rag, that was the point.
We have a rag, but do we, yeah, we need to look at it, do we need to amend our rags maybe or something, too, I guess. We could take a look at that, and I could see if there's some recommendations that Chief Culverston has that are different than what we have now, and we can kind of review what others around us do and that sort of thing. We can sort of look at that.
There's certainly a lot of communities that here, not only in this county, but surrounding counties, that, you know, they're on the side of a hill.
Right.
Have a motion on the sketch plat?
I'll move we approve with staff comments.
Do I have a second?
Second to get it out there.
All right, other discussion?
Kevin, from the staff's perspective, what is your recommendation here?
Well, I think the recommendation on, I think, we don't have a specific recommendation on that at this point. We were just want to raise, let them know we have that concern, we're going to be looking at it. I would like to see, this is, and I'm not the developer, and I can't speak for him, I just can't imagine that he would spend the money that it's going to take to bridge the creek and only do thirty-six lots. That may be his plan, but that is, that part doesn't, that's why we wanted to see the full picture on the plat, the sketch plat.
But they're saying this is it.
They're saying this is it. And that maybe is what he's going to do. I can't, you know, that's what they're saying, is that part didn't make sense to me, I guess.
And if it's not it, and it comes back later?
It comes back with the next phase, and then the next phase, and then the next phase.
And then how's that addressed at that point?
At some point, we got three or four hundred lots, and we haven't addressed the big picture, I guess. That's my concern, you know. I just want to be sure we address the big picture from a traffic standpoint, connections to surrounding property owners. I don't really think there are any connections on the, from the west side, from remember Gwynn Farms, because of the topography, I think they didn't, but.
Was there any, and I don't know that we required any of Gwynn Farms.
I said, on the, on the east side, we didn't because the topography was so steep, and we may not do that here, but there are, to the south and east.
If we didn't require on the one coming over there, there's not a reason to require on the one going this way.
But there might be on the east, to the east and south.
There might be on the other side, yes.
Yeah. And so that's where I'm, and there definitely are some road stubs on the south and east side, so. I want to make, that's, I just want to look at the big picture, again, traffic impact and those other things.
Could any of those be, like, as far as a traffic impact, let's just say another track develops here, is it something that, at that point, we wouldn't be able to go back and, or we wouldn't at that point ask for a traffic study?
We can ask for, I think it's mandated once a certain number of, each, on the development, once it gets to a certain number of traffic or trips being generated, which is about a hundred lots is really when it hits, you know, single family residential. So, I mean, we could look at it then, with, it's section two, section three, whatever, at some point, they're going to hit a hundred lots, and we could, we could look at it then, we could, but.
But right now, this is, this does not trigger that.
Yeah, thirty-six lots doesn't meet the threshold of mandating it under the zoning requirement.
Looking at this section here, I think you answered my questions on the cul-de-sacs, where there are the long cul-de-sac and the short one. They have the adjacent property. It's not a additional property.
Exactly. There's nothing additional.
But we didn't require it coming from the other direction. There's not anything for those two streets to meet up with that we have seen or approved. Is that correct?
Correct.
And looking at the topos, do you see us connecting to any additional property other than where it is right now?
I think, yeah, as you, where you have, for Woodmont and Woodcrest and those other developments are coming on the south and east side, I could definitely see some connections being made there, yeah.
How much property is there? I'm not sure I know.
Oh, I can't, it's.
Anybody have an idea?
I don't, it's, I don't know, but it's, I'm thinking in the, it's over a hundred acres, I think. I'm not really sure of the exact numbers, but it's, it's a large track.
At the end of the street near Lots Six and Seven, is that sufficient for emergency vehicles, turn around?
I think it's not long enough to require, it's not a cul-de-sac, so I think they would probably just back up at that point.
It's the stub, is all that matters.
Right, yeah. And this is twenty, what is it, twenty-five, roughly twenty-five acres, and you've got, it may not be a hundred acres, it's approaching a hundred acres, though, so.
Is this the edge of our city limits, or does the city limits extend further?
Uh, we go, I mean, we put Gwynn Properties in the city, of course, on this side of the road.
Well, I mean, on, on this particular property.
On this particular property, this is the extent on this side, on the south side of the property, there's a piece of it that's in the city. Coming up from the south going north, it was, it was the Buckingham Hills Development, what they're getting ready to build, the permits soon. It's going to actually connect and then come, begin developing the south side of this property. It's my understanding that's not, they actually did, I think we got a preliminary plat approved on that. They haven't moved forward at all, and I think, my understanding is they're not planning to move forward with that at this time.
Based on our major thoroughfare plan, does it, does that affect, do we see that being affected here?
There is, we did not, there's a road, it's actually part of Gwynn Farms. We had a road that connected Rock Springs.
To go all the way through to, is it Lee Road?
From Rock Springs to Lee Road, yes. There's, we don't have a, I mean, I, like I said, this wouldn't really be a major thoroughfare, but it would be an extension for a roadway that could be connected to the Woodmont, Woodcrest Development, which would provide another way in and out if we live there as well as the.
Which would probably be a good thing.
Because right now Montgomery Way is primarily the only real connection there, so. From Rock Springs is always the way.
And the only other thing from Montgomery Way on a major thoroughfare plan in this immediate area is what's going through the Gwynn and is to continue all the way through.
Would eventually do that, yes.
That's the only thing we had on our major thoroughfare plan.
Right, connecting Rock Springs all the way over the road. You have the connections, some east-west connections.
Yes.
But not north-south. And you have Cookslane, not too much further to the west. It's already there.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. We'll have any other discussion. And the motion is to accept the sketch plan with, with staff comments. And it is just a sketch plan. We look at this twice more.
You'll see the preliminary plat in the final plat, yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. New business, Steve, preliminary plat, Rocky Four Camber Road, staff comments.
This is the Blakeney subdivision. This is section one. It's phases one and two. They had submitted their final plats for phases one and two, and the preliminary plat, really for two reasons, needed to come back to you. One, it had been over a year, so it, the approval had expired, and then two, with the amendment of the HUD for this area, PRD, the layout had changed somewhat, so the preliminary plat that had been approved originally didn't match the zoning, so they either submitted there. So this, this is for phases one and two. This does match the, the HUD, the PRD that had been approved. It's fifteen point eight acres, total of forty-seven lots. Comment number one actually should be removed. This, this is a preliminary plat that it was listed as. Comment number two is really just an informational comment, which is just a right of CUD. The, we asked them to kind of, some of the, on one of the pages, some of the text and the drawing were basically causing a lot of conflict and made it hard to read. They've corrected that, so we can remove number three. We asked them to show the fire hydrants, which they have done, and they had the parking space and mail kiosks kind of almost partially in the right of way and partially in the, one of the lots, and so they have moved that over to the common area at the entrance to the subdivisions. That's to be removed as well. So really, they have addressed the comments that we really needed them to address on this.
So which ones are left?
There's really nothing left. I mean, number two, which is really just an informational comment, there's really nothing, nothing left then to, to address or take care of.
Questions? Have a motion.
Move we approve.
We'll have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Motion carried.
Under new business. Final plats.
Yeah, this is section one, phase one. This is part of what you just looked at.
One and two, just exactly what we looked at.
Pretty much, this is just the final plat.
Yeah.
For phase one, and then we've got phase two, the next one. We do have a few comments. Number one, still need, and two, need to say, three numbers, three needs to say, state. This is that no COs will be issued till all improvements have been made to the Norton Lane, Rocky Four Camber Road intersection. That was, all was talked about when this PRD first came in and the preliminary plat first came through a little over a year ago. Because this access that they're proposing as part of this is in a bad location with the existing intersection, so that that would be done before, before new COs could be issued. Number four has been taken care of and has been done regarding the sprinkler, adding a note that the sprinkler system is required in this section because it just hasn't adequate the fire flow. Number five, lot one has a dash line and appears to indicate a needment. There's no label or anything. We just asked them to clarify that, and that hasn't been addressed, we need to keep number five. Number six has been, has been addressed and has been corrected, so we can take that off. Number seven, they had a note that there would not be fire hydrants here because they're having sprinkler systems, but they will have to have fire hydrants, so they, we asked them to remove that note, so they've done that. Number eight, they have two curves, C twenty and C twenty-one, and the data tables don't reflect what those distances are. They're on lots forty-four and forty-five, so need to keep that. Number eight regarding the parking spaces is mail kiosk that we talked about on preliminary plat, that's been taken care of, so we can take number nine off. And number ten, scale, if you, it's a one to sixty scale, I think in the printing, it's, it's a little off, so they need to correct that so that the scale's correct. Number eleven and twelve are from CUD's comments, standard comments from them, so. Basically, we can take off four, six, seven, and nine. That's it.
This is the PRD.
Correct.
Was there some reason they had twenty-five foot setbacks on one side of the road and thirty on the other on some of these lots?
As part of their putt approval, they had a, basically a, kind of as part of their putt, it was a portion were going to be thirty and a portion were going to be twenty-five. That was part of their PRD, so that's why they have lots of differences.
It's consistent with what was approved.
Yes.
Other questions or comments? Have a motion.
I'll move we approve the staff comments.
We'll have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Pose. Motion carried. Item number two on the final plat, same subdivision, phase two.
And this is just phase two, some of our comments, we keep kind of the same, number one, two, and three, that we had on the other one. Comments, again, similar comments on four, five, and six, they have all been addressed, so we can take those off. And then similar comments, seven, eight, and nine, to what we had on the first one, still need to stay on there, so. So we can say we can take off four, five, and six.
Any questions? Have a motion. We'll have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Under new business, site plans.
We got one more plat.
Oh, Morton Lane. I went ahead and marked it off in the log up, excuse me. Morton Lane, go right ahead, please.
Now, this is the actual plat that is affecting the, the new right-of-way dedication that kind of goes along with the annexation that you looked at earlier. It's annexation of, again, was about, for about forty-seven hundred seven acre. This is proposed, is, is in a proposed R three zone. Again, it does realign the intersection there. We had a few comments. Number one, just to add owner and CUD signatures. Two, we do need a construction plan still for this road improvement. And then, number three, there's no, there's a water line on the north side of Morton Lane, or north and west side. It would be relocated. It's a CUD water line as a part of this. We'd ask them, there is, with the creation of this right-of-way, there is the creation of a lot of about ten, a little over ten thousand square feet. There will be a lot of record. Will be completely surrounded by three right-of-ways. Long term, the, what will become the old right-of-way of Morton Lane, the city will have to make a decision what we want to do with that. But at this, at least in the interim, we're going to have a lot of record, and we'd ask them to show water and sewer to serve that lot because we're creating a lot of record. They've indicated that that will just be set aside as open space. You know, long term maintenance of that, it will have to be, we have to look at that. I think long term, I think the, if the right-of-way, if the city were to, you know, quick claim our right-of-way on Morton Lane, it could be that, and this lot could be incorporated into the adjoining property to the, to the south and east. Again, but all that's still to be done, and in the interim, we're going to have a lot of record there, so we had a little concern about that. Comments, four, five, six, and seven, have all been addressed. Those are kind of just some cleanup items on the plat, so we can take those off. And number eight, would need to remain, just that it is, obviously, this plat can't be signed and recorded until the annexation zoning is approved by council, so. And that's what I've got.
But when you put a setback on three roads, three streets, three frontage setbacks.
You have thirty-five feet on all three sides, it will be tough to do anything with it.
But it's also a piece of property that's less than five acres. It kind of needs to be platted.
And they are creating, I mean, it is being created as a lot of record. I mean, it is being done that. I mean, it's labeled as lot one, you know?
Would, Kevin, with the, the existing Morton Lane, it's going to stay open?
It will till the road is approved, yeah, so, but, so I mean, that.
Approved, will it disappear?
When it's, when it's, yeah, when it's, when the new road is built, we'll have to close that off, and at some point, obviously, something has to be done with it, you know, at the city, or if we quick claim our rights to an adjacent property or whatever. Probably what will happen is we'll, we will, I have to defer to Tom a little bit on this, but I would assume what, when the, when the new road gets built as part of the, that will probably chew up some asphalt or something there to make it, or put up some barriers or something to make it impassable at the old intersection and force people to come to the new intersection. At some point, to be usable, somebody would have to go in, obviously, kind of remove that existing asphalt and.
In towns past, I think we have abandoned it to each of the adjacent property owners have, have.
We have in the past, yeah, and or, or at times, we have also abandoned it to just one property owner. If that property owner asked for it and was going to pay us for it, appraised value and that sort of thing, we've done that too.
But if they did that, would they get the lot as well?
That would be up to, that would be up to whoever owns that lot.
Yeah, you add to that lot, and then you got an outlet for a house.
Right, or you incorporate it into the adjoining property on the other side, and it becomes part of a larger development or whatever, right. I think that's the long term is what they are thinking, but all that's still to be done down the road, so.
That's how we get to see this one again.
Most likely, but again, in the interim, you do have a lot of record. It's basically going to be unbuildable. And I think probably in light, in lieu of water and sewer being extended to serve that, there needs to be a note added to the plat or something, which is not there now, that lot one is not buildable at this time, because there's no, there's no sewer there.
Green space only.
And there's no way, I can't imagine there's enough dirt to put a septic system in.
And we don't, you don't have, staff doesn't have an issue approving the final plat and labeling it as a nonusable, non-buildable lot.
That's the only way we can do this without putting water and sewer to it.
That's your recommendation?
Right.
Got a motion?
Move to approve the staff comments.
We'll have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Site plan, Sadler Brothers, staff comments.
This is a site plan for proposed new building addition in the rear of the existing Sadler Brothers homing building, which is located at ten three two six Old Nashville Highway. This new proposed storage building is to be forty by forty feet or sixteen hundred square feet in size, which like I said, will be located behind the principal structure. The proposed use is storage, which would be an accessory to their primary business located on site. There are two existing sheds on this property that are planned to be removed with the construction of this new building. Property is bounced to the north by an automotive repair facility, to the east and south by residences, and to the west by Old Nashville Highway. Surrounding zoning consists of R one, C two, and C four, and as proposed, the site may be accessed from the existing access off of Old Nashville Highway. This proposed building is supposed to be sixteen hundred square feet in size. Landscape requirement still needs to be met as part of, as part of the zoning ordinance of five percent, which is three hundred and thirty-five square feet. They are proposing for seven hundred and fifty, so over double. Architecture elevations show the primary material of brick and melt to be used on all four sides of this building. Landscape plan has been submitted by the applicant at this time, and it shows shrubs to be planted around the front parking area with three trees spread across the lot. This additional building will not require a designer view manual to be met as far as the landscaping is concerned, but the landscape requirement will still need to be met by the zoning ordinance. We got a couple standard comments. Standard comment four is a CUD comment regarding the water line size. The existing CUD infrastructure is adequate to meet fire flow requirement of fifteen hundred gallons per minute for this development on the opposite side of Old Nashville Highway than this development is currently located. On that same side as this property is located, CUD has a two-foot PVC pipe running along the front of the property. Staff comments, one and two have been addressed regarding landscaping and then the site data table. Staff comment three regarding a van-accessible ADA parking space should be added. The applicant added it, but the space is fifteen and a half feet. They need to be sixteen feet in width, so just increase the width on that to be adequate with ADA standards. Staff comment four, please provide an accessible route from the sidewalk along Old Nashville to the front door of the building. Staff comment five, fire hydrant must be located within four hundred feet of all points of the building. As shown on the site plan, the existing hydrants do not meet this requirement of four hundred feet, so a new fire hydrant would have to be added across the other side of Old Nashville Highway to meet this. And then, staff comment six, a water line must have, must have a minimum of ten feet of separation from the septic tank on this property. And with these staff comments and standard comments, staff would recommend approval.
Explain number four. What are we requiring him to do?
Well, I think there's, the nearest hydrant is, they're over three hundred feet away.
Number four.
Yeah, I understand that, I'm going to get to that. You're talking about the, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I thought it was four hundred standard, you're talking about four hundred staff, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, and they are proposing, they have a concrete walk that they are going out to the sidewalk there, it may be okay, we, Mr. Rosen made that comment, I don't think we had, had a chance to review these. I think they've got that taken care of, though. They do have a four-feet concrete walk from the, the walk in front of the house or building down to the sidewalk, the existing sidewalk, so I think they're okay. That's what that is, though, is it's an ADA requirement. It's kind of going along the north or west side of the parking spaces, which would also provide that access from the parking space to the, the ADA parking space to the door as well, so.
Right, so, so do we scratch four or not?
I think we can probably scratch four.
Now, what were you, what were you going to say?
I was just going to say that as far as the fire flow is on the other side of the road, there's only a two-inch line on this side of the road, and there's, obviously, there's no way you can put a hydrant on his side of the road. The nearest hydrant is, you have one is three hundred plus or minus feet away, and three hundred and forty-eight the other way from, and that's from his property corner. If he put, I think the way he could do this would be to add a hydrant on the other side of the road. It's not ideal, we prefer to have a hydrant on the same side of the road, but he can't do that.
So are you saying we're going to require a hydrant?
In order to meet the requirement of the fire code of having one within four hundred feet of the building, yes, sir. Because he's, it's over four hundred feet to his building, to the nearest hydrant.
How far is it?
Well, because you have to go around the building to get to it, so you're about here, or it's well over five hundred feet to get to his building. I mean, it's over, it's four hundred and fifty if you go across, across his property, not going around the building, so. Obviously, you can't put it on his side, and to upgrade that line is, would be excessive to do that.
So the hydrants are down at the corner where the church is located and up at Lennox Village?
Basically, yeah.
And all those immediately, because they're on the same side of the road, trying to travel across, whoa. Any of the commercial property over there wouldn't have adequate, though, would it? Automotive place next door...
The automotive place is probably...
Close.
It's closed, but he may not be the one on the corner there, pioneers.
Still, you're going across the road.
You're going across the road, but, like I said, which is not ideal, the fire department doesn't want to have to stretch a hose across a five-lane highway and shut it down, but they would have to in this case.
Yeah, is there a hydrant there at the store on the same side?
I don't know, talking about at the intersection.
At the market, it's probably not, it's probably across the road.
I think it's across the road at the church, that's what they've indicated on their plans.
There's still septic in that area?
Yes. He'd actually have to relocate his lines and everything, because it's where you're going to build this building is where you're existing line is.
What kind of options do we have? What if we approve it as is?
Well, I mean, I don't know that, if it's a fire code issue, I don't know if this body has really an authority to approve a waiver to a code. It'd be the code, the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, the code board, which is a board that I don't know if we've ever had meet.
Trying to find people for that.
Trying to, always trying to find people for it. And this is not a zoning ordinance issue or anything like that, it's a fire code requirement.
So if he doesn't build the building and he keeps his two sheds there, it's still going to meet code?
No, not really.
See, everything we have, everything we're looking at makes it better than what we have. Who has the authority to approve it?
As far as a waiver of a fire code, it really, I'm speaking out of my expertise, certainly, I'm not a codes guy, but the only board of any kind I could think of that could would be the Construction Board of Appeals, which again is a board that I think may have met one time fifteen years ago. You know, just, and that was really just to organize and elect a chairman, pretty much. They didn't actually hear a case of any kind, so.
Can a council do it?
I don't, I don't think so.
You'd want it to go to board of zoning appeals if you did, if you had your options, but just the way that it's, it's set up, it goes to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. But I think you can approve it, just that we'd have to deal with that if there was an issue with, if the building inspector didn't want to, or if the fire inspector didn't want to approve.
What's the wishes of the commission?
If there were an emergency today, not granting such luck or bad luck, how does the fire department service that property?
They would have to dial into one of those hydrants that's there and drag hose five or six hundred feet, if it was in one of those back buildings. That's the only way they could do it.
I think we just had this come up about two, three months ago, did we not, at one of Rock Springs, we had a business owner there, they had to end up installing a hydrant, so we've required it of them.
We have, yes.
When the fire code...
We did, yeah.
Required it, so, from a consistency perspective. I get what you're saying, Chairman, and Mike, you know, we're going to tear down old sheds and put it up in a new building, but from the standpoint of being consistent and sticking with the fire code, I think we have to look at that as well, so. We've, we've required it of others, is my point, and so.
Right, it existed, and that was, I think that was even a similar situation, they were adding on another building behind the existing building and that sort of thing.
I don't remember, three, four months ago, I think it was, perhaps.
What's, what's the wishes of the commission?
I move to approve it with staff comments.
Second. See, I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose? I don't know. Motion carried. Zoning ordinance amendment. Staff comment?
Yeah, this is what we discussed a little bit earlier. This is, kind of came out of the joint council and planning commission workshop. This would amend two portions of the zoning ordinance, four point zero seven one C ten and four point one seven oh. And both of these are where we have requirements for developments that are residential in nature for PRD or even any multifamily development, which could occur in R six. These are the requirements for common open space and amenities and what they're required to do. Essentially, this would kind of remove, as we discussed that, that night, kind of remove the requirements that we have now and create new ones. And the new ones would basically be the minimum of fifteen percent of the gross acreage, so we set aside as open space. And then at least thirty percent of that required space must be, of the required space, not the total space, it's the required space, must be set, improved, to be usable by the residents. And we give kind of some examples, but we don't have specific requirements of what those are. And then, we also are kind of tweaking what our requirements are on bus stops, just to kind of be consistent with what we've been requiring in the past. And so, again, this is, kind of puts in writing what we discussed that night, so, we would, would recommend this too.
Y'all have any questions concerning the changes here? If not, we'll have a motion, I move we approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose? Motion carried. Item number seven.
Yeah, this is a, yeah, this is a mandatory referral. Town's in the process of looking at some stormwater improvements in several areas around town, and there's been an opportunity has arisen to, for town to acquire some property to bring, help bring about one of those improvements in the area of Lake Farm Road and Nissan Drive. That property owner, which is BGS America LLC, has identified kind of as a, in lieu of the town purchasing this property, is kind of doing a swap. And they asked for, as part of that swap, there's some unimproved right-of-way, which is a portion of Nolan Drive between Imperial Boulevard and the CSX right-of-way, CSX line. We did have maps in your packet kind of showing where those two locations are. And so, again, the planning commission is required to review basically the purchase of, or painting property as well as abandoning existing public right-of-way, find whether or not they are in keeping with the adopted comprehensive plan of the town and make recommendations to the town council. Nolan Drive is still on our major thoroughfare plan to extend across CSX to connect here, which is as it was plotted. However, the likelihood of that crossing ever actually happening is so limited that it's probably something we should take off of our thoroughfare plan in reality. It's a less than, oh gosh, it's less than a mile to the Washington Street crossing as well as Jefferson Street, or Jefferson Pike crossing in Laverne. Of course, you also have the crossing at Sam Ridley there, it's not an at-grade crossing, it goes over. I think this was an idea, and this was plotted probably in the early nineties, I think, it was never built. And it's, I said, the likelihood of ever getting an at-grade crossing, I think, is so small that it doesn't make sense to keep that on our thoroughfare plan, and it doesn't make sense, really, in our opinion, to keep that property, and I think this would be a, a good way of helping both parties with regards, because they do own the property on both sides of that old, that right-of-way, so, so we would recommend it to you.
The idea of CSX ever approving across the Maricopa is somewhat limited.
Yeah, I think it's very limited.
Have a motion.
Move to approve, staff comments.
Have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose? Motion carried. On review.
Yeah, we've got a few of this tonight. First one is Lot fifty-seven of the Oaks, this was basically three existing lots that were created, plotted to make five, and anyway, nothing has been done at this time on this project. Did talk to the developer, they've had a lot of difficulty finding a contractor right now to do a small job, they did request an extension.
What's required there? A cul-de-sac?
Basically extending the cul-de-sac, it's not very much at all. Sewers are, utilities are all done, it's just a cul-de-sac extension. Airport Business Park, Lot three, this is, we had five items, and I have talked to the developer, and they, they did say they wanted to try and complete everything before this expiration. I've talked to them again since that time. They are going to be able to, comments two through five are going to be able to do for the thirty-first without any real issue. But number one, and they've met our staff on site as well, it's probably going to, because of the weather being so dry, they're worried about a lot of issues there. And so, at the developer's request, they have requested that that be extended six months and then reducing it, and we are, and our alternative recommendation was, was reducing it to ten thousand dollars and extending it six months, and they are, they are fine with that recommendation and have requested that. Rock Springs Plaza, Phase one, this is primarily landscaping and final paving on this development, has not been done, was not able, left a message for the developer and never received a call back. Would recommend extension of that, for spring to come around where they could replant those trees and that sort of, sort of stuff. And then, Mado, Section one, it's about eighty-seven percent built out, did talk to that developer, and he's planning on trying to get it paved before the expiration date. There are quite a bit of stuff to be done, repairs to be made, and both on utilities and the paving. This is one, we've only had a year, I would recommend a year extension here. If substantial work, including the final confidence completed, we might could look at reducing it, starting the maintenance period, but I think we're probably going to look at...
Well, they can come back and request that at any time.
They could, we're, we're probably going to look at extending it at the current amount, just because we've had some of the issues out there, so.
Kevin, I was...
That's all you got?
I think I even asked you about this, is do they still need to do their, it's like a walkway or something they were having to build, or not build, but maintain?
Yeah, they do have kind of a walkway in some of their common area, I think we did allow it to...
To be grassed.
To be grassed and not paved or mulched or whatever. I think that's still to be done, although they are, they are working on their pavilion out there, which was part of that, they are doing... I think that's still to be done. Although they are, they are working on their pavilion out there, which was part of that. They are doing that now, and the parking for that, that sort of thing.
Good. Have a motion.
I move to approve.
Have a second.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Anything else?
I don't have anything else.
Anybody else have anything? Please stand and try.